Planning Commission. This meeting is being held remotely via the Microsoft Teams app due to the ongoing COVID pandemic. It's not foreseeable for us to have this meeting in public at the St. Paul courthouse where the meetings typically occur. So we will be having this meeting electronically today. If commissioners, if you have a question, please type a C or a Q into the comment section and I will call on you accordingly. So the first item of the agenda is any announcements by me. There was, I'd just like to remind the commission that the matters that we discuss and that we are dealing with are very important to members of the public. And especially for members who take the time to come and provide public input. And so I know sometimes, especially in the Teams apps and the Zoom calls, it could seem a little informal. And we try to have a little bit of fun to try to pass the time here. Given that the meetings sometimes get a little long, but just be mindful that our decisions have direct impact on community members. And sometimes our gesturing between each other or our joking around between each other could come off as not being, not taking the matter seriously. So just a reminder to everybody to please just be mindful of that. Other than that, I don't have any other announcements. Luis, do you have any announcements?
Good morning, Chair, and good morning commissioners and staff and members of the public. Appreciate you joining us today. Just a couple of, a few announcements that I wanted to make. Some of you heard this already, but recently at the city council, we had three new individuals who were appointed to join us on the planning commission.
Sorry to interrupt, but we didn't do roll call this morning for the commissioners.
Sonya, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you for catching us. Sonya can do the roll call, please.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner DeJoy.
Yeah.
Commissioner Grill. Commissioner Hong.
Here.
Commissioner Hood.
Here.
Commissioner Oliver. Commissioner Lind, okay. Commissioner Lindicky.
Here.
Commissioner McMurtry.
Here.
Commissioner Muchipah.
Here.
Commissioner Perryman.
Here.
Commissioner Presley.
Here.
Commissioner Rizberg.
Here.
Commissioner Said.
Here.
Commissioner Underwood.
Here.
And the Chair.
Here.
Attorney is excused today.
Thank you. Luis, you were saying?
Chair, thank you. So yeah, just that we, the city council recently had some appointments for some new individuals to join the commission. And we're working on the date for them to join, including an orientation prior to. So Jake Riley, Zehyun Yang, and Simon Tagia are the three that will be joining us shortly. Second, on sort of the same note, appreciate your assistance in spreading the word about the other vacancies we have in the planning commission. We've received 23 applications and are considering those for additional recommendations to the mayor's office from wards one, five, and seven. The Commissioner Grill may also speak to this today, but we intend to launch a a website for the parking regulations zoning study today. And we'll be also releasing a, can I ask? Yeah, sorry about that. I just was saying that today we intend to release a website and a study, the parking regulations zoning study, and begin conversation at the Comp and Neighborhood Planning Committee next week, starting next Wednesday. The Comp and Neighborhood Planning Committee may mention that as well in their, their report. And then in addition, we are preparing, staff is preparing. And the Communications Designations Committee is preparing to, preparing for our annual meeting coming up next time on February 5th. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Luis. Any questions for the Director? All right, seeing none. The next item on the agenda is the zoning commi, oh, Luis, I did have a question. I know we have a variety of outgoing commissioners who agreed to stay graciously until a replacement is found for them. Would any of the three, just for notice to them, would any of the three that would be coming in be a replacement to one of the outgoing commissioners?
Chair, thank you for that question. So if, I'm fairly certain about this, but I think the answer is no. Two of them are from Ward six. And we've had some longstanding vacancies in Ward six. And the other one is from Ward two, and I believe this is the spot that Chair reveal once had. He's been off the commission for some time. About 90% certain of that, but I'll let you know otherwise.
Thank you, Luis. And to the outgoing commissioners, thank you so much for continuing to come to the meetings and participate in the commission. I know for some of you, there is some urgency to find a replacement. So we appreciate you continuing to come. It sounds like there are a lot more applications for other vacancies. So hopefully we'll be able to fill those soon. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, it's the zoning committee. I believe Commissioner Baker will be presenting on that on old business.
Thanks, Chair. Good morning, all. We, I guess to start off, we have, the upcoming site plan review meeting is scheduled for January 26th has been canceled. There are no new projects to review for that meeting. And there will be one item for the upcoming zoning committee meeting scheduled for next week, January 28th. It is the, is an item coming back before the zoning committee, 1346 Arcade Street. A change in expansion of a nonconforming use, which includes variances for parking. We had three items during our last zoning committee meeting. And one of those items that I won't actually go in with great detail, just because it's being laid over. It's also very complicated with a long history. But it is that change in expansion at 1346 Arcade Street. A nonconforming use to add auto repair and outdoor auto sales to existing, to an existing auto body shop and dwelling. And it included variances for parking. Like I said earlier, the, the site has a pretty long and complex history. Just to provide a little context, in 2007, the site was rezoned to T2 as part of a zoning study addressing Arcade Street. And there were, there was a lot of conversation. I think Mr. Dermody did a great job, staff, in providing the zoning committee kind of what all happened in, in, some of, well, the extensive changes of kind of back and forth that kind of bring us up into this time. There were a few areas for the commission that staff felt findings were not met. I can go really quickly with, between these areas and then I'll just move on to the next item. The first area was Section 3B, off-street parking is provided for the expansion or relocation. Staff felt that was not met. Section 5B vehicular access to the outdoor sales area shall be at least 60 feet from the intersection of any two streets. Staff felt that that standard was not met. Section 6A, the variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning code. This required, staff found that that quite, that, that finding wasn't met as well. Section 6B, the variance is consistent with the conference plan. Staff felt that that finding wasn't met. And then Section 6C, the applicant has established that there are practical difficulties in complying with the provision. So the reason that this is being laid over, because there was a lot of conversation and discussion between zoning committee members. Staff did approve certain aspects of the application and then recommend, recommended approval on certain aspects of the application, but also denial on others. Staff recommended denial of the variances of required parking, landscaping, and minimum distance between vehicular access and the arcade clear intersection. But like I said earlier, staff recommended approval of the changes and expansion of nonconforming use to add auto repair and outdoor auto sales to the existing auto body shop and dwelling on the site. There were eight additional conditions that staff put in. There was a lot of conversation around the second and the third one, which I wanted to highlight, that the spray booth addition on the north side of the building shall be removed. And then number three, the clear avenue curb cut within 60 feet of the arcade clear intersection shall be removed and replaced with curbing. After further discussion, there was just overall concern around, I think that there was an overall sentiment that there was agreement to try to move forward with potential language to approve those items. Based on the complexity of this application, staff did not feel comfortable with moving forward at that time with suggesting alternative language for this application approval on those items. So we agreed to lay this application over to our next committee meeting at a 6-0 vote. And then staff is coming back with potential alternative language to approve those areas. And also guidance, because we wanted to make sure that in doing, and potentially doing what we're doing, that we're not setting precedents in some other areas. So staff also planning to get with legal, Mr. Warner, to provide some recommendations based on what they heard from the committee meeting. So that was the first item, which is being laid over. Chair, is it okay if I go on to the next?
It is.
Okay, our next item was 2069 Marshall Avenue. It's a rezon from T2 traditional neighborhood to T3 traditional neighborhood. The property at 2069 Marshall was rezoned from R3 to T2. And the property immediately to the east at 2063 Marshall Avenue was rezoned from R3 to T3. This was done to support citywide goals of increasing density and land use, diversity at neighborhood nodes, and focusing investments along transit corridors. There was one person that spoke in favor of the application and nine people that spoke in opposition of the application. We did have one letter of support and 28 letters of opposition. Many of the concerns and testimony that came for it were neighbors voicing concern around not being updated. Not having, it not being a true collaboration, understanding of the progress in the intent of the site. The Union Park Community Council recommended that the application be laid over for further, to a future zoning committee meeting to allow for more discussion. However, staff found that all findings were met for the application and recommended approval for the petition to rezon. There was a lot of discussion and conversation among zoning committee members on this. The zoning committee voted 6-0 to approve this rezoning.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. So the motion coming out of committee is to approve the rezoning. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none. Sonya, can we get a roll call?
Okay, Commissioner Said.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood. Commissioner Grill. Commissioner Perryman.
I saw that Commissioner Muchipah was a question. I don't know if we need to get to that first or not.
Sorry, I missed that. Since I called the issue, Luis, could I go calling Commissioner, Commissioner Muchipah to provide her comment or question?
Chair, I think we could pause on the, because we really only had, I think, two people maybe vote so far. We could pause the voting and entertain the question.
Okay, thank you.
But then we should just be clear who, who we do have. Sonya, if it's clear, do you? Yeah, we can go forward, I think.
Okay, Commissioner Muchipah.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, and thank you, Commissioner Perryman, for stopping. I, I'm just curious if, if we could hear a little more about the discussion regarding the, the letters from opposing community members and how that was considered before the zoning committee voted.
Chair, I can, I can try to answer that and I'll definitely will accept staff stepping in and also providing some perspective. I just want to clarify, we're only talking about letters. We're not talking about who testified during the zoning committee meeting?
Yes. And I guess if there, if there were, well, yeah, I'm, I'm referring specifically to the letters because they're here in front of me so I can see them. But if there were testimonies also, I'm, I'm just curious about how, how public comment was considered.
So there was, through the chair, there was a lot of public comment and concern. I think one of the biggest things, and again, I will definitely defer to staff, but one of the biggest things that came out of this was a lot of neighbors around where this, around this site were very concerned around what it potentially would do to the current character of the neighborhood. There was concerns about how large this, this construction would be and what it would do with parking. There was also concern around not being in the loop and staying in the loop around what was happening with this site. I think that we've, we, we actually had a lot of long-term residents that provided input during that, during the zoning committee meeting that was just overall concerned and felt like a lot of their questions were not being answered by the applicant. And they wanted to have more information and input. They, some were just overall concerned around having potentially that many people at that site. So consistently, we heard those types of concerns. But I don't know if staff would like to, or anyone else that was at the zoning committee would like to chime in? I think Chair, Commissioner, as your hand.
Commissioner Grill. Commissioner Grill.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe I was wrong.
All right, is there any, any other commissioner that would like to add a comment on that? That was present for the zoning committee with regards to the opposition to the request to rezon?
I think I saw some staff hands raised.
Ms. Dadlitz.
Thank you, Chair. One thing I would just say is that some of the conversation was around not enough information about the specifics of the project and some studies to be done. And I would just remind the planning commissioners that the application before you is one for rezoning. It's not a site plan review application where a lot of those details will get worked out through that process.
So with that said, if there is concern about the site plan issue, like we, we have another item on the agenda today, which is a review of the site plan. A planning commissioner could request that the site plan also be brought before the commission, if there is concern about that within the commission itself.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other comments or questions on it. Sonya, could we go back to the roll call?
Okay, Commissioner Hood, I didn't hear your answer.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Grill, I didn't hear yours either.
I think Sonya says that she's having problems with her mic in the chat.
Oh, could she just type it in? Okay, but she said yes. Okay. Commissioner Perryman.
Yes.
Ms. Lindicky.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Rizberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Underwood.
Yes.
Commissioner McMurtry.
Yes.
Commissioner Presley.
Yes.
Commissioner Oliver.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner DeJoy.
Yeah.
Commissioner Muchipah.
Yes.
Commissioner Hong.
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right, so the motion to rezon from T2 traditional neighborhood to T3 traditional neighborhood at 2069 Marshall Avenue is approved. Commissioner Baker.
Thanks, Chair. We have one last item. It is the site plan review for a six-story mixed-use building on Lexington Parkway North at Fuller Avenue. I think many of you are familiar with this site. It is somewhat close, right up next to the Wilder Foundation Building. Well, near Wilder Foundation. And this site, if you remember, just to give context of where this is, in the past has been used to kind of accumulate the excess snow. So as proposed, the site plan includes 288 residential units, 3,000 square feet of ground-level commercial space, and 254 structured parking spaces. At the planning, at the planning commission meeting on December 4th, 2020, the planning commission voted to hold a public hearing for the site plan once an application was received. And a complete site plan application and plan set was received on December 22nd, 2020. Site plan review is a function delegated by the St. Paul Planning Commission to staff, to city staff. However, a site plan may be referred to the planning commission for public hearing and decision. Which, which in this case is happening. Staff found that all findings were met for this application. And at the time, the district council did not comment on this application by the time of the meeting. There were three people that spoke in favor of the application and six people that spoke in opposition. We, we received one letter in support of this application. And then we also had 10 letters in opposition of this application. So I'll go through and then we can talk a little bit around the discussion. So based on the, the findings, staff recommended approval of the site plan with the following conditions. Number one, the final landscape plan shall be approved by the city forester. Number two, sewer plans and technical details shall be approved by the Public Works Sewer Division. Number three, the staff impact study shall be accepted. And the plans be approved by the Public Works Traffic Engineering, Public Works Traffic Engineering. Number four, the final utility plan shall be approved by St. Paul Regional Water Services. Number five, lots shall be combined with the Ramsey County records and mapping. So there was a lot of discussion. There was discussion amongst zoning, zoning committee or on this application before the vote. And a lot of it came up, and I'll definitely open it up for those that were at the zoning committee meeting. But some of the things that came up was a concern about not necessarily having the community and those that are around be more informed about what was happening. We definitely asked the applicant in multiple different ways, based on the testimony that we heard around the amount of times and how they connected with neighbors in the community about this potential development. But there was also pretty substantial discussion around the concern of affordable housing and the affordable nature of the, the development. The applicant did answer questions, but that came across as a little bit more of a sticking point. So with that, the zoning committee voted 5-2 in favor of the application, having, again, two people vote in opposition of the application. And I will definitely defer to them to speak to potentially their reasons why.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. Any discussion on the motion coming out of committee, which was to approve the site plan? Commissioner Perryman?
Yeah, I don't know if the, if the other, anybody from the zoning committee was going to say anything first or not, but I just wanted to make sure I wanted to say something before a vote happened, but I just wanted to, anything from the zoning committee?
I, through the chair. I'm sorry, and again, I'll defer to my colleagues. Again, there was a lot of robust conversation around this. The rationale for me voting in favor of this application were, were a few things. I know that there was a concern around the affordable nature. And we actually asked the applicant somewhat detailed questions about the affordable nature, almost like square footage cost, the type of units, what they envisioned, those types of things. And I think that one of the things that's been very important for us, at least in this, this current planning commission, was the affordable nature of a lot of these developments, because it is important to our communities that we're representing. And for the information that I received from the applicant, also understanding that there is no support from the city in helping this applicant build this building, and yet they are still trying to find ways to make units affordable, I think was important to me. I also think that this land has been vacant for years, that there is a great opportunity for there to be development at this site. For, from what I remember, that this land, anyways, it's been vacant for years. And so I think when it comes down to the affordable nature that I felt comfortable with, that something actually would be built here, it just made sense to me to be able to move forward with it. And so for that, I voted in favor of this application.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Baker. I see Commissioner McMurtry posted a comment, then Commissioner Grill, and then Commissioner Said.
Thank you, Chair. And this is a question for anyone on the zoning committee. Just some clarifications, if you all had brought this up during your conversation and discussion on this topic. Looking at the, I guess, the average, medium income and the average cost of rent in that area. I'm just thinking of the university corridor along the Green Line. There are a number of other. a number of other housing apartments that are along that corridor. Was it discussed what the, the average projected rents for this development on Lexington is compared to some of those other apartment buildings? And then the other question I had, and this is something that's been raised, that I've gotten in emails and other folks who are in opposition to it, is concern over this development violating the minimum sidewalk with a possible blockage of bike pedestrians. And so I want to just bring that up and see if you had any conversations around those topics in your committee meeting, and what were some of the, the answers to those questions?
Through the chair.
Go ahead Commissioner Baker.
I can start and definitely ask staff or chair yourself to chime in on this. I can start with the sidewalk. There was, well, first of all, Commissioner McMurtry, there were conversations about both of those items, starting with your ladder around sidewalk, where what we found out was that that sidewalk handle right of way actually is not owned by the city, is owned by the county. And so there had been conversations, but initially, I think that there were some that felt that the city should be doing more, and that it was in the city's authority to do something about that situation. And what we found out during that meeting is that that was not the case, and that it was actually, it's a county right of way. So that just made it more complicated in what could be done. And then your other question, just briefly, it was somewhat discussed. The concern was that the average or median rent in that area, the suggestion was that it was lower than the projected rent, even if it was affordable, was, if that makes sense.
The, Chair, can I have one quick follow-up?
Go ahead Mr. McMurtry.
So to that question, just so I understand, the, the rent that's projected at this site on Lexington is lower than the average rents of units along that university corridor? Through the chair, no, that's not exactly what I'm saying. What I'm saying is the conversation came across, and I would like staff to probably weigh in on this, on the fact, but the sentiment was that there, the average rent within that area and neighborhood was going to be lower than what was projected at this site, that even though this site was being considered or being suggested as affordable housing, having some affordable housing, it still came across that the affordable housing there could potentially be higher than what was the average rent in that neighborhood. Gotcha.
Would staff like to clarify any of that, or is that all accurate? I believe it is accurate, the way that Commissioner Baker articulated it.
Chair, this is, this is Luis. I can just jump in and generally confirm, I'm checking my notes here, the applicant, and I just wanted to point out too, for the commission, that the affordability of the units is not part of the, the official findings for a site plan review. We have to stick to those findings. But I did write down that, that the applicant is intending about 155 units at or below 60% of the area median income of the approximately 288 units. And that in, 60% of AMI is, I don't actually know the stats off the top of my head for the broader neighborhood, but that in some cases does, would be at a higher level than what current market rents are in existing housing. And then I have a message here from another staff member, Tia Anderson, Chair, or zoning Chair Baker, she, she might have some information to add to the right-of-way conversation.
I see Ms. Datlas also raised her hand. Luis, did you just want to read her comment, or should I call him? Is Ms. Anderson on the phone?
Chair, I think Ms. Anderson's prepared to, to comment.
Yeah, yes. Chair Ringo Morales, Commissioner Baker, just to expound upon the sidewalk conversation in particular, to clarify that Lexington Parkway is unique. It is both Ramsey County right-of-way as well as City Parkway. And so there are also a number of plans, city plans, that are part of this area, so both in terms of station area plans, as well as parks' plans for facilities. And so it was through preliminary conversations with parks, Public Works, planning, as well as Ramsey County, that we landed on a 15, excuse me, a 12-foot wide sidewalk. And the boulevard then ends up being 15 feet, I think at its minimum. There may be areas where it's wider than that. But that is certainly a larger-than-standard sidewalk, and will allow for future expansion of pedestrian and bicycle facilities on Lexington Parkway. And I don't have any further information on the, the question of affordability. I don't, as Mr. Pereira said, Katie, I think, had her hand raised, so I don't know if she's got additional comments to add there. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Anderson. Ms. Datlas, do you have anything to add?
Thank you Chair. I would just add that in terms of, excuse me, in terms of the question regarding bike route, the station area plan calls for extension of a bike and ped route from Fuller to the west, but the station area plan also specifically says that if the city doesn't take the steps to acquire the right-of-way in order to preserve the ability to do that, that development can proceed. And in this case, the city has not taken the steps to preserve that right-of-way and can't stop the development from proceeding.
Okay, so for those who were interested, I voted against it. There was two people, Mr. Said, and he can comment on why he did. That right there was my hanging, one of my hanging points on it. What Ms. Datlas just said is that the city's not taking an action on further developing a plan. That was, it's supposed to be part of the bike plan, and I don't necessarily understand why. But moving on, I see there's a lot of people in comments and also raising their hand. So Commissioner Grill, and then Commissioner Said, and then I'll call in Commissioner, I believe it's Muchipal, the next one that commented. Commissioner Grill?
This is Commissioner Grill. Hopefully you can hear me.
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. So I just wanted to outline my reasoning just a little bit. So I think a lot of my decision-making on this one centered around the fact that it is a site plan, and the findings to approve or deny a site plan are really specific. And so I had a hard time finding anything to me that seemed like it would have a legal basis to deny the site plan. I, I think the developer as well, because they are not getting any city funding or additional funding for this project, the fact that they are including any affordable housing at all is really out of an attempt by them, I think, to do what they can to help the community. I don't think, like all of us, that it goes far enough, but this is one of those areas where I don't think, because we haven't made a decision as a city, and I think the Chair also made a comment on this, because we haven't done anything to require affordable housing, the fact that they are including it, and that there is a chunk of it that is going to be at, I believe, 60% AMI, was an improvement over what they're technically allowed to build here. So I feel like if it's not this site plan, it would be another site plan, and at least this one includes some affordable housing. Thanks.
Thank you Commissioner Grill. Commissioner Said?
Thank you, thank you Chair. Good morning everyone. Yes, I, um, two questions Chair. And number one, I don't know if I hear it, and is, did staff ask for the developer what rent will be, looks like on the, the site?
Are you asking what rent currently looks like, or what it will look like under their proposed plan?
Yeah.
What it will look like?
Yeah, did their staff ask the, the developer?
Yeah, so there was, as Commissioner Baker commented, a lot of discussion on that. I point-blankly asked the developer what the square foot, what the price per square foot would be. The developer was a bit frustrated by that question, but they did reply that it would be about $2 a square foot. That, I don't know if that's rounding up or rounding down, or if it's exactly $2 a square foot, but that would essentially mean that a 400-square-foot apartment, if it's exactly $2, would be around $800 a unit. I mean, I'm just going off of their number again, but that, that sort of gave us a range of what these apartments would end up costing. I do know that, and that's just my own math, so if somebody wants to comment on it and provide something different, go ahead.
Well, the Chair, thanks Chair. I mean, I was in, I was in a zoning meeting, and, and that, when we ask the developer, there was 155 units that, you know, is going there, and he says that it's minimum rent, but he didn't clarify that, and how much will be the rent. And because, the reason that I was against it, that, because I spoke to a few people that live the area, like two blocks, three blocks, and also there's businesses there in the other side of the street, and it's a strip mall there, and, and they all concerned that the rent might go up. And, and especially there is a gentleman who live four blocks, and he-
Mr. Said?
Yes.
So Luis, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're only allowed to consider the testimony that was provided written, and also by public testimony at the hearing, correct?
Yeah, okay.
Chair, that's correct. So any, any testimony or written comments received after the public hearing was closed on the 14th of January cannot be considered as part of the public record.
Okay, okay.
So we would ask, Mr. Said, that you disregard that testimony when making your decision today? And just a reminder to the other commissioners, I know there, there was several emails, it sounds like that were sent, I think I may have received a voicemail that I have not, that popped up in my email, but those are supposed to be disregarded.
Okay. My concern, my concern is just, just, just the rent that, well, will go up, for those, when, the new developers, when they put there.
Thank you for your comment Commissioner Said. I would also like, like to remind commissioners, as Commissioner Grill stated, and Director Pereda noted, what we're doing is a site plan review, and so the affordability, while important to the community, on what will be going into their community, is important for me, for purposes of transparency, at least for the decision today, there is nothing really we can do about that. But of course, I think the questions being asked to the developer are important, and at least provide some idea of what this site will look like once it's completed. Commissioner Muchipal?
I, I think, I think Commissioner Perryman is first.
Okay, Commissioner Perryman?
Or was that from before?
I think that was from, I think that was from before, but you have a comment?
I want to comment at some point, yeah, I can, yeah, thank you Commissioner Muchipal. Yeah, I plan on voting against this, the, with various reasons, but the, even, just obvious that this developer is not, has this community in mind, even if you look at the graphics they created, the lack of diversity in their digital images, which would be an easy thing for them to do, and their other developments across the city are just, so I'll go with the finding number four around the protection of adjacent neighborhood properties to regional provisions and those things. It talks about surface water drainage and other things, but I think just in general, the, the effect it will have on the community, sort of the cost-benefit analysis of, of this space being empty, we're not getting anything necessarily, but I think the damage of space being occupied, even if we did receive income from it, tax dollars, are those tax dollars going to support these communities that are going to be damaged by this? I think we've asked so many times, when these things come across, for the city to take action, and, and nothing happening, that it just, yeah, it just being fed up with situations like this, and, and at what point is something like this going to be addressed and something taking place? But yeah, I'm just, I plan on voting against this.
Thank you for your comments Commissioner Perryman, and the reason articulated would be for reason number four, as you noted, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so what, for other commissioners, if the staff recommendation is to approve, the recommendation coming out of committee would also be to approve. And so if there, if there was a reason to deny, it would have to be based on one of the reasons, the legal bases that are noted in our reports, like Commissioner Perryman just outlined. But Commissioner Muchipal?
Yeah, I, I guess I will echo Commissioner Perryman. I guess this, I feel like this has happened before, where something's come from the zoning committee, and there's no, so what I've been hearing is that affordability is not a consideration. I think that we've talked about this before, where we've had applications come through, and we are bound to the current findings. I'm curious why there's no mention about, so if this, this meets certain findings in the comp plan, but it doesn't meet other findings in the comp plan, and those other findings are never surfaced? I feel like we really need a process that starts with the values of the city. The, the very beginning of the comp plans talks about the values of the city, and talks about the goals of the city, as, talks about the goals of the city first being kind of put through those values. So I guess my question, so I'm a little frustrated to be in this situation again, where, you know, we're being told that we are supposed to be looking at a certain set of things, and knowing that it does not meet the values that the city has stated very clearly, and so like, we really need to develop that mechanism, because we are not going to be meeting our goals. Yes, we have a housing shortage, but we have, we have, we don't just have a housing shortage, we have an affordable housing shortage. So I'm, I want to know what it would take for the city to, to get more affordable housing in strong market areas. And if this, I mean, I think there's also the rationale that, you know, the developer is not, like, there are no city funds going into this project. Maybe we need to think about putting city funds into this project to include more affordability. I just, I'm having a really hard time just kind of like, having these really rigid parameters for us in- for us in making this vote that don't take into consideration the values that we, we claim to have.
Sorry, sorry about that, everybody. My connection dropped briefly. Um, so I, I did catch all of what, uh, most of what Commissioner Muchapau was uh, talking about. Um, I, I will just remind the commission that, um, the larger question of whether to require developers, um, to provide affordable housing or housing that's affordable within all developments that are created is a question that the city, uh, has in the pipeline to consider. Something that was not anticipated, um, was the COVID pandemic and sort of the pause that it did to a lot of projects. So, uh, it is a discussion that Louise and I have, have been having in terms of when that will be put on, back on the docket. Uh, I think a lot of our concerns and a lot of our frustration with, uh, this, this particular issue could be, uh, addressed and summarized by that, that, that proposal. And I think Commissioner Muchapau, to your point about when there's a conflict between, um, uh, two different agendas or two different objectives in the comp plan, uh, that would be up for us as commissioners to delineate what is important. Um, as Commissioner Perryman just made a mo- noted, um, you know, he is valuing something that's different than what is in the staff report, and I believe he's providing a valid basis for it. So, um, it, it, you know, to, to some degree, it also falls on us to, uh, as commissioners and as appointed, uh, individuals to highlight what is important to us as community members, especially when that may differ from what the staff recommendation is, uh, is saying. So I, I do see there's additional comments, uh, Commissioner DeJoy and then Commissioner Hood, and I have Commissioner Tram and Commissioner Presley. So, Commissioner DeJoy?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, so during zoning committee meetings, we debate the importance of affordability so many times. And in the past, it has been frustrating during those deliberations to, um, come up with a rationale. Um, I appreciated Commissioner Perryman's, um, um, legal basis to disagree with the findings, and I think I'm going to lean in that direction. But more specifically, this was not a unanimous vote at the zoning committee. Um, Louise, you touched on, um, what you felt was a legal basis to disagree with the findings. Um, and I'm, I'm not clear what Commissioner Said's, um, legal basis was to disagree with the findings and support your dissenting vote. If, if we could hear more about that, um, I think it might be, um, helpful to some of us who are going to vote today.
Uh, I'm happy to do that, Commissioner DeJoy. Uh, I'm gonna finish calling on people because there are several that have been waiting to make a comment on various issues. And then we'll circle back to the people that have, have already spoken, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Hood, I, I see that you've been waiting for a while. Could you, would you like to comment on something?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, I want to echo Commissioner Baker's comments from earlier. And I also want to reiterate that I think the staff report covered these issues very well and very thoroughly. Um, I, I also want to say that, um, I think this is a great area where an inclusionary housing policy at the city level would be very helpful. Unfortunately, at this moment, that's not something that we have, so we don't have that policy to use as any type of guidance in making this decision as it pertains to the affordability. Uh, I also wanted to briefly, uh, just mention that, um, I would personally like to see this bike connection and reconnecting the grid, really to help improve connectivity to, to the light rail station nearby and the surrounding neighborhoods. Reconnecting the grid is an important thing to do. However, um, with the city really being absent in this regard and having the outstanding county right-of-way issues that make this, uh, pretty challenging, since there doesn't seem to be an issue and the developer, doesn't seem to be a push from the city to make this happen, and the developer controls the land, I don't think that we have any legal mechanism to address that issue as much as I, uh, personally would like to see it. Um, so I'll vote in su- support of this project. I, I don't pretend that this project is perfect. Um, I would love to see the rents lower in this building, but I cannot find a legally compelling reason based on our current code to vote against this project as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hood. Um, Commissioner Tram and then Commissioner Presley.
Thanks, everyone. I appreciate this discussion. Uh, my question is around why the city has not taken more action to, um, to pursue getting the right-of-way for the Fuller Street Bike Land Extension? Because I think a lot of times what we find in the history of planning is that harm is done via inaction. Right? When we don't stop freeways from destroying Rondo, BIPOC communities suffer. When we don't put in safeguards for anti-displacement, when new investments like Green Lines are brought in, BIPOC communities suffer. And I think this is, again, um, a question about, like, do we honor the voice and work that, um, that community members have put in to, to create, to do community engagement, to approve a, a station area plan, um, that the, the CNPC committee has also put work into reviewing and confirming, and staff have put work into approving. Um, how can we do better at honoring that work of community members and, and helping them, um, see through the vision of what they have? So my question is about why the city hasn't taken more action in order to pursue that right-of-way and to honor the work of community, um, in passing that Lexington Station Area Plan?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Tram. That's, um, very well stated and kind of my, one of my two concerns, um, at least, well, one of three concerns. But I wonder, uh, well, now first, um, if Commissioner Hood and Commissioner Said could lower their hands, just because it's a bit confusing on who still wants to comment on this. Um, and then, uh, I'm wondering if someone from staff, uh, Louise or somebody, uh, could comment on the question that Commissioner Tram just very well laid out.
Chair, this is Louise, um, and I, I'll, I'll actually lean on other staff to, to add to what I say. Uh, uh, my understanding, and we've engaged with Public Works, uh, on this, um, on this question about, you know, the Fuller extension through the site. And I, I don't have the full background in terms of, uh, why. I, you know, I think it's a matter of resources oftentimes and, uh, you know, finding the resources to, to secure right-of-way, to purchase, uh, the land, you know, the privately controlled land, uh, through a site takes, uh, resources, takes time, um, to do that. Uh, it, it just didn't happen in this case. I don't, I don't have the full history as to why. Um, but, um, I also want to raise the issue, um, that's relevant to this issue, but other, other, others, you know, as we read our station area plans, there's a lot of concepts in, in the, uh, station area plans, um, that illustrate what could happen on individual blocks. And, you know, the purpose of, of some of those drawings is to, um, to be illustrative about how, how things could work. And there is obviously, obviously a, a general, um, goal to, you know, break up these larger blocks, improve mobility, improve walkability, and that is something we definitely, uh, you know, it was echoed not only in the stationary plan, but in, in, in additional plans beyond that. So that is still, you know, important for the city, but, um, uh, I just would challenge us to not be too prescriptive, and if you read the Lexington Stationary Plan, it, it actually says that, uh, that the, you know, these are not intended to be, um, prescriptive, uh, for evaluating future development proposals, but they're examples about how the vision and the goals and objectives can be realized. Um, so, you know, eh, because, because the use is, is legal, uh, per the zoning, um, you know, that, those are, we have to go back to our ordinances, uh, and, and what's on the books to Commissioner Hood's point. Um, uh, by Public Works, this is definitely on the radar for future evaluation. How do we improve the mobility east-west in this area? It is still very much important policy goal for the city, uh, but the specifics of that, we're gonna, we'll be looking at more in the future. Um, I don't know if, uh, Ms. Anderson or Ms. Carter or Dadless have anything to add to that?
Chair Wrangell Morales, uh, this is Tia Anderson in the Department of Safety Inspections. I'll just, I'll echo what, um, Mr. Pereira was saying. Uh, the other thing to consider, uh, and I think this was part of the staff presentation at the zoning committee, uh, is that Fuller, uh, is a T intersection at Lexington Parkway, um, and does not extend through as right-of-way, uh, for a number of blocks, um, really, I think all the way to Snelling Avenue. Um, and so, you know, I, I can't speak to, you know, why the city has, has maybe not, um, invested the resources to proactively, uh, acquire right-of-way to extend Fuller. Um, but it, it is more than just, uh, this one particular block. Uh, in addition, I believe, uh, that, uh, Ruben Collins, uh, in Public Works Transportation Planning and Safety, uh, has indicated that there is an intention to update the St. Paul Bicycle Plan, um, starting sometime this year. And so I'm sure, uh, these east-west connections will be something to be considered.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Um, when you say to be considered, do you mean removing them as, because no action has been taken?
Uh, Chair Wrangell Morales, uh, I, I can't speak to that. I, I didn't mean to imply one way or another, other than, um, uh, certainly when, when staff, uh, works to review plans, um, we consider, uh, public work staff, planning staff, uh, et cetera, we would be considering, um, options for, for updating plans. I, I can't speak to what might be added, removed, altered, um, brought forward.
Commissioner Presley? Oh, sorry, is there anyone else from staff that would like to comment? And then? All right, Commissioner Presley, thank you for, uh, waiting.
Sure. Can you hear me? I'm gonna make sure my mic is on.
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. I, I, first of all, I'm, I'm, um, some of my concerns or questions have been answered, but, um, you know, it was around the smaller area plan or the area plan that actually the city had adopted, um, concerning that bikeway that, um, connecting Fuller across Lexington. But it seems like that's been answered. But I also wanted to, um, express my sentiments and that I echo what Commissioner Perryman and Muchapau, Commissioner Muchapau and just recently Commissioner Tram. So, um, I'm also not in favor of this project, um, for the reasons that have already legally been, um, talked about. But again, I'm concerned with, as a former developer, that we're always asked, are, is, are our projects or have our projects followed area plans or the community wishes, um, in developing the site plans? And our site plans have been changed, uh, because of the, uh, sentiments and concerns of, of our residents. And whether this project is getting city money or not, they're gonna probably ask for something from the city, whether it's funds or variances, which they've already asking, especially which, uh, doing, uh, a six-story building on this corner. So, um, um, I won't belabor anything, but I wanted to just bring my thoughts forward and to, um, um, show that some of the, my concerns have already been, um, brought, um, to the fold.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Presley. Uh, going back to Commissioner DeJoy's question, uh, I was one of the persons who voted against it. Um, and I'll, I'll just speak on the three reasons that I thought were, um, relevant to the decision that we have to make today. I won't know just quickly, Commissioner Presley, I don't think they're asking for any variance or any request from the city. Uh, so let me just clarify that the, the applicant is not specifically not making any request other than approval of the site plan, which I, I think is a pretty standard. Um, so the, the first was the, the connection between, uh, of, of the bikeway, as Commissioner Tram noted, and sort of the inaction of the city, uh, in sort of creating this, uh, this connection that was, uh, a, a plan that was approved and that went through this entire process of, of input and so on and so forth, and sort of, do we just, the inaction that Commissioner Tram was commenting on. Um, I think that might fall under the number one, whether this, the site plan, um, falls within the city's adopted comprehensive plan and the development or project plans for, uh, for sub areas of the city. Um, I understand that a lot of that is not on the developer, but it is on the city for failing to act. And, um, I, I, I don't think that's appropriate. The, the second reason was, uh, that hasn't really been talked about, uh, was the amount of traffic that this will be crea- that, um, is anticipated to be created from this, not only the parking spots, but also the commercial space all appear to be using the one entrance into the Wilder area off of Lexington. Um, and so, uh, when that question came up, Mr. Warner, the city attorney, commented on the fact that the ci- that, that road is actually owned by Ramsey County. So, um, it's unclear to me what, if any, actually, it sounds like there's no, nothing really we can do to mitigate uh, or in- incorporate any form of condition in the event that, um, there's, uh, uh, traffic that occurs, um, that would, uh, impact the immediate neighborhood. And then the third reason was for the reason articulated by Commissioner Perryman, uh, which is the impact on the surrounding area, and I agree with him, um, on, on what he just commented on, and Commissioner Muchapau and Presley and Tram. So those were my, uh, three reasons, uh, that I think this doesn't meet the site plan. But I see that there is an additional comment. Commissioner Lindicky?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I was on the zoning committee for this conversation, and we had a, a, you know, a good conversation about it. As, uh, the outgoing transportation chair, I would just comment on the bike plan question, which is that when the bike plan was adopted in 2015, there were a lot of ideas in there. And, um, the map, uh, is, 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 was always gonna be flexible based on what the city could implement, where money came from at different points in time. And, um, as, as I think Louise mentioned, that it's up for, um, it's gonna be revised soon. And I, I, I think my reading on what direction the city is gonna go with, um, bike planning here is to emphasize more of a bike route on St. Anthony, perhaps, um, similar to the one that's further to the west. But in general, we do try to break up blocks that are too large to make them smaller, to make, uh, more mobility connections and sidewalks for people. This project does, um, it's not perfect, uh, but it does have a, um, an easement and, and area for people to walk around and bike around, uh, the building. So they did, they did do a little bit. Uh, for me, looking at this from a transportation perspective, there wasn't a clear reason to vote against it because of that. And two, two members of the Bike Coalition did come and testify about this. Um, one in favor and one opposed, um, about the bike connection specifically. I wanted to make one other point as well, if you have the patience for it, which is, um, about the inclusionary zoning conversation that we've been having here at the commission for quite a while, and I think it's very important. I support moving in that direction and, uh, coming up with a policy that we can talk about. But, um, my guess of what that would look like in the future would be similar to the one in Minneapolis. Um, they adopted inclusionary zoning, I think, a year and a half ago, and it requires, in a project like this, um, 8% of the housing to be at 60% or below area median, median income. That's the level that they found was, um, uh, workable for their, their housing market. So I can only imagine that ours would be similar to that. Um, maybe we'd be more ambitious and make it larger number or a lower AMI number. But this project would definitely meet, um, I think, any requirements that we would come up with in an inclusionary zoning ordinance. So it's got, um, 150 units or half, half the project, uh, below that number. So, um, I, I didn't see that as a reason to vote against it either, so I supported the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lindicky. Uh, Director Pareda?
Chair, thank you. Just to, I wanted to respond to something you said specifically just a few minutes ago about city inaction on the right-of-way. You know, we, I guess my point is, the city can't, we can't penalize a developer for, you know, the absence of what we, you know, of action on the city's part. And actually, the adopted plan says that. It says, "Until we, the city is able to secure necessary resources, either through public investment or through negotiation with private developers for desired new open spaces or other public infrastructure, private property may be used for any legal use permitted under the current zoning classification, provided that the proposed use meets all applicable conditions and/or standards." So I just wanna, well, I'm not an attorney, I wanna caution, you know, caution the commission to not utilize city inaction as the grounds for saying no to the project, given that, you know, at least in staff's perspective, the project meets site plan findings.
Thank you for that clarification. And so then, I agree with you. I think if that's what the ordinance says, or the, then I would not rely on that as a motion to deny this. I don't get to vote on this, but I would not then rely on it. To Commissioner Lindicky's point, and then we can go ahead and take a vote on it. You know, I think the most concerning part for me was that if this was under a formal policy that the city adopted, the developer would be required to maintain, you know, whatever it is that that policy states. Currently, what we have is the word of a developer to do this. And I'm a little hesitant to just point-blankly say that that's what's gonna happen, especially given the hesitancy of the developer to speak about these issues in a transparent way. So there would really be no way to hold the developer to the standard that they have told us that they're gonna do. And not to speak poorly of the developer, I mean, they very well may. And I hope that they do, you know. But I think that's the difference between having a formal policy and not having a formal policy in place to make sure that housing that's affordable is actually developed. So to me, that's the big difference between the two. Is there any other comment or question on the issue?
Yes, Chair. This is Commissioner Sayed.
Go ahead, Commissioner Sayed.
Yes, I just wanna clarify that I am, you know, again, it's this and because of the not clear of the minimum income that when the, when the, when the, when the developer says that. It's unclear whether it says minimum income, it's not clear to me.
That's okay, Commissioner Sayed. But as Commissioner Pada noted, for the reason that I stated, it's an improper reason. I think that would also be an improper reason to vote against this. It would have to be based on one of the standards that was laid out in the staff report.
Yeah, it's also, yeah, it's also unclear that, you know, staff report that that in, it didn't, you know, it didn't have, it clear to me that if they ask that, what will be the, is it a real affordable house or not? And also, and, and, yeah, it's got to be something from the city saying that the area is minimum housing area, the low-income area. And it's got to be something that, that before they, you know, before, before they start, before that, for, you know, before starting the developer. And, you know, it has to be something recommendation or something that the community and the area that, that before, before starting developing, that the area that has to be in, you know, city has to be something to say that you have to, you know, you know, even if they're not going through to the city to get help, it's gotta be something there that community need or can help something, something has to be built there. That not, not in, you know, yeah, it's not clear to me.
Commissioner Tram, and then Commissioner Baker?
Thank you. I, so I will be voting against this project, and my reasoning will be that it does not align with the comp plan. Specifically, I'm looking at policy H-16, which is to increase housing choice across the city to support economically diverse neighborhoods by pursuing policies and practices that maximize housing and locational choice for residents of all income levels. I think when we use the term "affordable," we have to be really cautious, because everything is affordable to someone, right? And I think when we say "affordable," it's really important that we say "affordable to whom." And looking at the comp plan itself, there is a chart that lays out, you know, what area median income is regionally, which is what is used to measure affordability generally. And it also shows what St. Paul household income looks like. And I think it's really important that when we say something is 60% AMI affordable, that means it's affordable to someone earning $100,000 a year for a family of four. And that is not reflective of St. Paul household incomes. And so I just wanna be really cautious that when we use "affordable," and I think it's important to be talking about affordability, we are also intentional about who that affordability is for. And so when we look at 60% AMI housing, which I think is an important part of the housing spectrum, it is really not accessible to all income levels. And that is a key part of the, of the comp plan, is maximizing housing and locational choice for residents of all income levels. And this also has disparate impact on our BIPOC communities. Over and over again, we see that when it comes to to our inability to meet our fair and equitable access to housing goals for the city. So I think, you know, in the future, I challenge all of us to be really intentional when we speak about affordability, "affordable to whom," which measures are we using? And then I just wanna share with everyone that my reason for voting no will be finding one, and specifically policy H-16 of the comp plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker?
Thanks, Chair. I know we're about to move to a vote, and I'll be really quick on this. I appreciate the conversation. I think that we definitely have been having these conversations for a while. And for those that have been on the commission, you've definitely heard me with some concerns around this. And that hasn't changed. I still am planning to vote for this. However, I just wanna highlight something. And I say it for those that are voting against it, because I heard it again. I actually think that you really need to be careful. This is my suggestion to my colleagues. If you want your vote to move forward and not be tied up with any issues legally, that you definitely connect it to something. And I think, I just wanna make sure that we're being very thoughtful. And even if those that are voting opposite of how I'm voting, I wanna make sure that, as Mr. Warner would say, that there is definitely a legal basis that we can tie to it. Because if not, what ends up happening is that this could actually, how you vote and what you tie it to could derail what you intend to do. So I'm just throwing that out there. I know it's technically going against what I'm about to vote for, but I just wanna make sure that we all are clear on this. Because in general, I'm still in agreement overall more affordability.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Baker. And so, let me just clarify. So for right now, the motion coming out of committee is to approve. So we would take, we would take a roll call on that. And very well may be that the, that the motion is approved and that this passes. In the event that it does not, then we would have a discussion about whether there's a valid motion or a legal basis for a motion to deny. And we can, we can consider that at that time. But right now, the motion is to approve. So if there's any, any additional discussion? All right, seeing none. Sonia, can we get a roll call? Again, right now, the motion is to approve with the conditions.
Commissioner Anderson?
No.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Mr. DeJoy?
No.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Hong?
No.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliver?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindy?
Yes.
Commissioner McMurtry?
No.
Commissioner Mucha Powell?
No.
Commissioner Perry?
No.
Commissioner Presley?
No.
Commissioners Berg?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
No.
Commissioner Underwood?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. No habit, it's seven, eight, no's have it.
All right, so that motion fails. Now I would open the floor for a motion, for another motion or for more additional discussion.
Commissioner Perryman here, I'll propose a motion to deny.
Okay, and what would the basis for the denial be, Commissioner Perryman?
Based on various.
Keeping in mind that certain reasonings, such as the one that I stated about the bike path, affordable housing cannot be used for a denial. So taking all that into mind, what would the motion or the basis be?
Yeah, I don't know if I need to, if we need me to craft something at some point, but it looks like, I don't know if there's still comments. But yeah, I would, based on, for the protection of adjacent neighboring properties through reasonable provisions, is one that I feel does not meet.
Okay, so that's reason number four. Luis, is that a substantial basis for the motion?
Chair, Commissioner, I think, I think we should, I'll challenge you to be more specific. So there's, there's items in number four that you disagree with. So related to, you know, the specific things related to surface water drainage, sound and site buffers, reservation of views, light and air, and those aspects of design which have substantial effects on neighboring land uses. One or more of those things, I think you need to identify. And in order to have any sort of, you know, a clear record for, you know, for, for the city and its decision-making, you know, a basis for which that you seek to deny it. And, yeah, I think that would be important for us, for the city.
Commissioner Perryman?
Gotcha. I'll have to craft something, but I don't know if Commissioner Huang had anything to contribute or anyone else, but I'll word something.
Commissioner Huang?
Yeah, my reasoning was around finding one, around the comp plan, specifically citing housing policy H-16. I'm not sure if that is adequate.
Commissioner Pada, we've previously been told by Commissioner Warner that the comp plan alone is not a basis for denial of variances. Is that different for a site plan?
I can't, I can't, Chair, I can't be an attorney or channel him, but from, from what I remember, it's similar to what, I think you, you mentioned that we get on pretty perilous ground when, if we're only, if the comp plan, you know, consistent with the comp plan, is the only grounds on which we're denying something. I think there needs to be some specific zoning ordinance standards we need to, to identify that as a commission, you know, we disagree with. Or, you know, that we find the application is not meeting. The comp plan can be an additional consideration or finding, I think, to that. But that's what I would challenge us to do, is consider that in order for the, if that's the commission, if that's the commission, what you wanna do, that's, we have, you know, a more solid basis for the decision.
All right, so what it sounds like, Luis, is that that could be one, what Commissioner Huang just noted, could be one of the reasons, but that we would need additional. Perhaps Commissioner Perryman was able to articulate the adjacent neighborhood provision better. I would also note, Luis, would it be possible, given the complexity of this, and also sort of the opposition that this sounds to be coming from the commission, to lay this over to, for individuals who are opposed to it, to speak with staff about coming up with language?
So the, so the question, Chair, is to lay over a decision by the planning commission in order to craft some language so staff can assist commissioners who'd like to deny some language to form the basis of that denial? Is that correct?
That would be, I think Commissioner Baker's comment is a very well-stated concern. And I just wanna make, there's been so much discussion and a lot of reasons for which we can't deny this that have occurred throughout the, which are concerns that could, that came up during discussion. But in terms of the basis for a denial, unless there's gonna be a person that currently voted against the last motion that would be in favor of voting for it, I think the best thing to do might be to lay this over and have individuals who voted against to work with city staff to come up with an actual proposal or language for it. Commissioner Underwood?
Yep, Mr. Chair, I was just willing to make that motion, but Commissioner Mucha Powell has a question.
No, actually, I was gonna make that motion.
So let me get clarification from Director Pada on whether that's something that we could or should do, or how does he propose that? Or he could try to come up with a language now, I suppose?
Chair, sorry, Chair, I'm just looking at, the only thing I'm thinking about is the deadline for action. I believe we have a 60-day deadline on February 16th. If it gets laid over to the following planning commission meeting, February 5th, and then a decision happens, you know, 10 days after that, an appeal deadline will be pretty close to the deadline for action. I don't know if Tia or Ashley in DSI have any thoughts on that course?
Ms. Anderson, or Ms. Dads?
This is Tia Anderson, Chair Rangel Morales. In terms of state statute 1599 decision deadlines, Mr. Pereira is correct. The 60-day decision date is February 16th. However, staff could, if needed, based on a layover and possible appeal deadline, staff could extend that 1599 decision date to another 60 days, which I believe would put us at April 17th.
So what I'm hearing is that we do have time? Is that the short answer to that?
Yes, I believe, yes, with a, with an extra 60-day extension, that, that would give time for a planning commission decision as well as the 10-day appeal period.
And that wouldn't be something that the applicant would have to agree to? That's just something that the city could invoke?
Chair Rangel Morales, that is correct. The city staff has the ability to extend a 1599 deadline for an additional 60 days with cause of these decisions. These decision and appeal periods would certainly be cause for an extension.
Luis, is that okay then? There's a motion for for a continuance or for delaying? Or should we continue to try to discuss the language?
Chair, I'm comfortable with what Ms. Anderson has mentioned here as a timeline. I just didn't want to, I wasn't sure if we were in our second 60 days already. I had my doubts, but it sounds like we are not. We're in the first. So yeah, the another 60 days would allow time for the appeal to come in as well as time to be considered at that city council. So I think I think we, I think that will work if that's what we want to do to give ourselves more time to develop, work with the makers of the motion, Commissioner Perryman and or Huang to develop some language.
Okay. I will also note, it's, we will have new commissioners by the next commission meeting. Is that correct?
Chair, yeah, we may have, we still have to figure out when we're going to be swearing our new commissioners in. Could be as soon as next time or the the meeting following.
So it also could be, I mean, Commissioner Edgerton could have tied the vote if he was here. I know he voted in favor of it. So just, you know, things to consider in making the motion. I think, just for what it's worth, I think if we are gonna, if the commission is gonna deny, that we should state the reasons appropriately and under valid premises. So I'll leave it up to the commission members to decide what to do. If someone has a motion, if you could just speak, I'm having trouble seeing the comment section right now.
I can make it. This is Commissioner Muchipal. I make a motion to lay this matter over until the next or so that we can work with staff on the official language for the motion to deny.
Okay. So the motion is made by Commissioner Muchipal. Is there a second?
Yes, this is Commissioner Said. So I can make second.
So the the motion is to delay for two weeks for the people voting against it to speak with staff about articulating a reason or the the reasoning for the denial made by Commissioner Muchipal, seconded by Commissioner Said. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Sonia, could we get a roll call?
Okay. Commissioner Presley?
Agreed. Or approved, did you hear me? Sorry.
DeJoy, Commissioner Joy?
Yes.
Commissioner Muchipal?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
No.
Commissioner Oliver?
Yes.
Commissioner Hong?
Yes.
Commissioner McMurtry?
Yes.
Commissioner Underwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindkey?
No.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
No.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
No.
10 yes, 4?
All right. So the motion to delay this for two weeks and and have it come before us at the next planning commission meeting is approved. So this matter will come before us in two weeks to the applicant if they're still or they're present. You know, that doesn't mean one thing one way or the other. It could very well be that it is approved, given who the commission, who sits on the commission at that time. So I want to thank everybody for your thoughtful comments. And certainly a very delicate topic to talk about as it's something that a lot of commission members, all of us commissioners are here to 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 provide input on and and kind of voice, you know, where we see the the issue affordability and sort of the makeup of the community going. And so thank you, everybody, for your comments, one way or the other. It was very, very well appreciated. Commissioner Baker, I believe that's the last item on your agenda, correct? Commissioner Baker?
Looks like we may have lost him. I'm not seeing him on the the team's meeting.
I saw that there was so moving on to the next item of the agenda is the comp plan committee. Commissioner Grill?
All right. So we have one item listed on the agenda. I'll give an update on parking. And then we have an additional item added, which is the intent of zoning study. So first thing, our next meeting of the zoning committee will be on January 27th. Staff, correct me if that's wrong. And we'll be covering for the first of a few meetings, covering the parking study. That report is now up on the CNPC page on the city website. So I'm sure we'll all be following that conversation pretty closely. So that's the next upcoming meeting on the topic. The item officially on the agenda is the District 12 Plan. I'll give a little brief overview, and the plan is to release the draft for public review and to set a public hearing on March 5th. So the District 12 Plan is a 10-year plan, an update. And in addition to the comprehensive plan, it was done by the St. Anthony Park Community Council. They did a survey, an engagement process in 2017. And they have submitted multiple drafts for review and discussion, the final one being submitted in July of 2020. Review of the 12 Plan was put on hold until the 2040 Plan was adopted. When that happened in November, this then became, I guess, applicable for being added in. And staff found that the plan is generally in compliance with the 2040 Comp Plan. And they had a few edits, but none large enough to prevent it from being released. So the the recommendation that that came out of committee was to release the draft for public review and set a public hearing for March 5th.
Okay, so that's the motion coming out of committee. Will Mr. Derby be presenting on this, or are we just going to take a vote on it?
If he would like, he can. Otherwise, I think the materials were provided, I think, in the packet or the links for this week. So if if folks have specific questions, they can ask them, or we can have a presentation if if he's prepared for that.
Okay. If, I think, just given the time, if everybody would be okay, unless someone has a specific question, we could just proceed on to the motion. Okay, so let's go ahead and take a roll call on that, Sonia. And this is on to release the District 12 Plan.
Okay. Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker? Oh, I think he's gone. Sorry. Commissioner Muchipal?
Yes.
Commissioner DeJoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliver?
Yes.
Commissioner Presley?
Yes.
Commissioner McMurtry?
Yes.
Commissioner Underwood?
I believe she had to step away as well. She made a comment about it.
Commissioner Hong?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizberg?
Yes.
Mr. Lin, Commissioner Lindkey?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson? Commissioner Perryman?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes, so the
Unanimous.
The District 12 Plan update will be for for public review, will be released, and a public hearing set on February 29th, 2021. The next item on the agenda is the Communications and Nominations Committee. I see that Commissioner Underwood had to step away. Luis, would you like to, go ahead?
Chair, sorry, there was one more item.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry. Sorry, Commissioner Grill.
No, that's okay. Added by Ms. Mohan. So staff has proposed to assess the history of the zoning code and doing research into prior zoning codes, conducting interviews, and additionally focus groups, potentially doing a community survey. And then what would come out of that is an intent of the zoning code study. And so Ms. Mohan came to the committee just to give us a brief overview on what that process might look like and to get feedback on the scope of the study. I don't know if you have additional items you want to add, Meneka.
No, but just that maybe of interest to the commissioners here, part of that scope is to look at specific sections of the code, and one of them includes the site plan review findings. So taking into the context today's conversation, that's a code section that we're also proposing to study.
All right, Chair, that that's it from CNPC.
Okay, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is Communications and Nominations. As Commissioner Underwood had to step away. Luis, could you provide us an update on that?
Chair, a short thing, the Communications and Nominations Committee met this morning. We're, it's probably our busiest time of year. Looking at vacancies for words one, five, and seven. We have about 23 applications that came in. We also looked at our semifinal draft for the annual report for 2020, and you'll be seeing that. We plan on bringing that to you next meeting.
So that's it. So the next item on the agenda, I, is there no transportation did not meet? So Task Force?
Chair, we did meet, actually.
Oh, you did. Go ahead.
But I'm, I don't know if Commissioner Rizberg wants to take over, if he wants me to do one more of these.
I'm happy to do it, but
Still Commissioner Rizberg.
Okay, that's fine.
He can provide you with feedback after.
I welcome it. So our last meeting was January 11th. We heard four items. The first were introductions, and Commissioner Lindkey kindly chaired the meeting and introduced me as the new committee chair. And it was good to hear from all the members. I'm very impressed by the expertise, their expertise on the issues, and look forward to learning a lot more about transportation issues from them. Then the Public Works Department brought three items to the committee. First was the Hamlin Avenue Resurfacing Project, which is, for those of you who don't know where that is, it's between Highland Parkway and Randolph. And this construction is scheduled for the fall of '21, and includes bike lanes and pedestrian crossings. So the the committee approved a recommendation to move the plan forward to city council for public hearing and gave final and and final approval. We also got a brief overview of the Public Works Five-Year Capital Plan and information on the city's regional solicitation project process. So good first meeting to get my feet wet. Again, I appreciate Commissioner Lindkey for his help with that. And our next meeting is February 8th at 4:30. And I don't know if Mr. Dermody is on and can let us know of any agenda items that are expected for that meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Rizberg. Mr. Dermody, is there anything you'd like to add? All right, not hearing him. Moving on to the next item is Task Force, Commissioner DeJoy, and I'm not sure if Commissioner Grill has any updates.
Thank you. This is Commissioner DeJoy here, just reporting on the Hillcrest redevelopment master planning. There was a meeting held on January 19th. That was our 11th committee meeting. Planner Bill Dermody described the process for how we got to the final scenarios, including part of that process was community engagement on the front end, and then the community advisory committees affirmation of our community priorities, also influencing the scenarios where the technical advisory committees and the port authorities establishment of policy and technical priorities, which came from sources like wetland and the city's comprehensive plan and the ordinance that approved the bonds originally for the port to purchase the property. I have pasted in the chat the the current Hillcrest Master Plan. It has a lot of maps and colored photographs and talks about the site conditions. It also has the policy and technical priorities that include the hope of creating 1,000 jobs and 1,000 households and areas of development for parks and trails and open space. It also includes the 20 named priorities, so I encourage everybody to visit that and review that plan. We are going to be getting down to the finalist scenarios, which will be two being proposed. And let's see, we will have another community engagement effort in March. So if people want to weigh in on that, but I do encourage you to take a look at the master plan thus far. It it's pretty comprehensive at this point. And that's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner DeJoy. Commissioner Grill, do you have any status update on?
This is Commissioner Grill. Nothing from the Riverview Corridor Station area Task Force. We haven't met yet. And I believe that the first meeting will either be in late February or potentially the beginning of March.
Great. Well, we look forward to hearing about that development. So I think that brings us to old business or new business, old business. So seeing none, thanks, everybody, for joining the January 20th, 2021 St. Paul Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.